Whole Town Council Committee of the Whole Meeting. It is 6:35. Councillors present. Bordelain, Baumgartner, Franco, Heed, Melendez, Parker, Granatowski. Councillors O'bury and Zepary have notified that they will be with us shortly. So we are seven to start the meeting. We are on to item three, Calendar and Communications. And I am, as I have done at most meetings during this public health crisis, I have given the floor to Mr. Burt to begin to give us an update on the public health emergency. Mr. Burt?
Good evening. I was notified by Ledge Light Health today, Department today, that unfortunately we have one more COVID-related death in 83-year-old male. That makes 17 in the town during this pandemic. Of course, all our cards go out to the family. We hosted a business forum today with the city, the town did. Let me grab my notes one sec here. There's a virtual meeting with local businesses. As we know, the partial state reopening is May 20th if all continues on as scheduled. We had Mayor Granatowski do opening statements. John Reiner acted as emcee. Mayor Hedrick, as well as many departments of our, members of our planning department and the building official for the city and the health department. We gave out information on what's happening with the governor's partial startup, how our zoning works with helping the businesses out. The city did the same thing, answered questions. We had approximately a little over 50 participants in the meeting. We do anticipate there will be more meetings to come as information comes out and things evolve. I thought it was a great start, though. Very good first meeting. Had some positive feedback on it already. And in terms of the town proper, we've been working on plans for individual departments and had a staff meeting this afternoon going over each department's draft plan. We've got to merge them together. Now, one of the first steps we need before we could do any kind of opening is we're working on plexiglass shields to protect staff. Craig Hanover in the Public Works Department is working on that. So I don't anticipate it would be by May 20th. Maybe, I'm going to ballpark right now. We'll put out information as it firms up, and maybe June 1st. But it will be a stepwise reopening. It won't be jumping all in. It will be a cautious, safe opening. But as plans come together, I'll share them and touch base with everybody. Did you want me to mention at this point the request from Clint Wright concerning the cleaning at the police department and maybe annex? Did you?
If you don't mind, if we could save that for other business, that way we can open it up to the council to give their consensus at that point, please?
That's all I have.
Thank you. Before we start, I just want to give a quick kudos to a young woman in our community named Erica Chandler, who has started a GoFundMe called Groton Feeds Groton. There was an article in the paper today, and she has done amazing things in three days. She's raised over $6,000. And if you saw the article in the paper, the donations go to buy restaurant gift cards from our local restaurants. And then those gift cards will be given to Groton Human Services to help our neighbors who are in need. So it's, you're getting double the, double the good for your money. And I just want to say thank you to Ms. Chandler before I forgot about it. So we will go round the table now. So we are starting with Councillor Baumgartner, please.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just attended a Rules Committee meeting. And other than that, nothing to report. Thank you.
Thank you, Councillor Baumgartner. Councillor Parker? Councillor Parker, do you have any communications? We can come back to Councillor Parker. We'll go to Councillor Franco.
I do have. Councillor Parker is not coming in very clearly.
Yes, we've heard. Councillor Parker, if you could check your audio and then we'll go to Councillor Franco and come back to you.
All so with Councillor Baumgartner at the Rules Meeting and various emails. Send my condolences. Oh, is it not work?
We're having trouble hearing you.
No, it's, it's the strange.
Can you guys hear me?
Sounds like a robot.
Councillor Franco, why don't you go ahead? And Councillor Parker can get the communications in order.
Okay. So I did the Mystic Chamber of Commerce Restaurant Meeting as well as the Economic Development Committee Monthly Meeting. And they also would like to be holding business forums. Went to, I attended the reopen.
The last meeting.
Can we possibly mute, Councillor Parker?
Me?
Something is not working right. Okay, so I'm going to continue. Attended the reopen Groton Business Forum today. The video will be available for all to see as it was recorded. I spoke to many Groton business owners regarding the hardships they've been facing as they've, most of them have very reduced, limited hours. I had started a Facebook fundraiser for the Groton Food Locker, which I will be ending on May 18th. And I will now be putting my support behind the Groton Feeds Groton fundraiser. And Erica Chandler, had a great conversation with her a couple of days ago. And I think she's going to be doing great things. Also, another new group on Facebook called Adopt a Class of 2020 Senior Groton, Connecticut. It's actually Groton CT, where you can join the Facebook group and adopt a senior high school student. You can send letters, maybe a gift or anything to make their graduation special. As this is a new thing that communities are doing to make this year special for seniors around the country. And again, it's Adopt a Class of 2020 Senior Groton CT on Facebook. I've also heard that the Groton Senior High School will be holding their graduation commencement ceremony on June 19th. And it will be held in, as an outdoor drive-in movie-style event. And there's supposed to be more info to come on those details. Though I'm happy, I'm very happy to hear that they will be working on a commencement ceremony for the graduates where, in a certain way, they can all come together. So that's my report. Thank you.
And we will go on to Councillor Heed.
Nothing to report.
Councillor O'bury has joined us. We are at eight councillors. Councillor O'bury, do you have a report for us?
No, I will just tell you, I'm happy to be back in Connecticut. I thought the program this morning for information for people with businesses was excellent. Extremely well done. Thank you very much, John Burt.
I'd like to say thank you to John Reiner. He had more to do with it than I did.
Well, that's true. You know, I think what was important.
Everybody.
If I might, I think the thing that was important is everybody was very calm, very concise and very helpful and gave the feeling that they wanted to help everybody. I thought it was great. Thank you. John Reiner.
Okay, we have, we have Councillors Zepary and Councillor O'bury with us. So we are at nine councillors. We will come back to Councillor Parker in a minute. We are going to Councillor Bordelain, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to say that I, you know, continue to think that the families of Groton, the businesses as well, and my condolences to the families and all the frontline workers as, as I, in my uniform, just still coming back from work myself. So continue up the, continue the good, hard work. And I hope everyone stays safe. And thank you to the town for putting on the forum for the businesses and getting some ideas and thoughts out there. Thank you.
And Councillor Melendez, please. Councillor Melendez?
You're muted.
Oh, hey. Nothing to report. Just second, what Councillor O'bury said. I watched that meeting earlier this, today. And it was very, it was, it was very helpful and informative. So thanks.
Thank you. Councillors Zepary. Councillors Zepary, do you have anything to report? We'll take that as a no. And we'll go back.
It's a no.
That's a no. Thank you. And we'll go back to Councillor Parker. And hopefully this sound issue is resolved. And because we'd love to hear from Councillor Parker. Mr. Burt, can you, there we go. Can you unmute on your end? Thank you. We're set. You have the floor, Councillor Parker.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Thank you. We're here.
Oh, my goodness.
We can hear you.
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Hello?
Yes.
I don't, what, it just, all right. It's in the last meeting. I don't understand why I'm having difficulty right now. You can, no, I'm just saying, good.
I did, sure.
Okay. Just that I attended the meeting, the Rules Committee meeting. Wonderful meeting. We're moving along and just a lot of emails and prayers to the families that are hit with this COVID-19. And to the ones who are sick with it, I pray for them to get better.
Thank you, Councillor Parker. All right, we are on to Approval of Minutes. And this is on page two. Councillor Baumgartner, would you like to move Approval of the Minutes, please?
Absolutely. Well, I'll make a motion to approve the, I'm sorry, approve the Council of the Whole, the Council of the Whole Meeting Minutes for May 12, 2020. So moved.
Second, Bordelain.
Moved by Baumgartner and seconded by Bordelain. And I will go to Mr. Burt, I believe. He has a correction to the minutes, please.
First of all, did he say May 12th or April 21st? I thought he said May 12th. I just wanted to double check.
Councillor Baumgartner, could you?
May, May 12th, the 5th, 05, May?
April 21st.
These are the minutes from April 21st. Would you like to change your, or adjust your motion, sir?
Oh, shoot, yes. I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Yes, I will make a motion to appro, that's, that would be today's meeting. I'm sorry. I'll, I'll do it, make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes for April 21st, 2020. So moved.
Second, Bordelain.
Okay, thank you very much for clarifying that. It was just a matter of the date. Mr. Burt, what did you find?
Well, Ms. Landry found, and if you go to page four of the minutes, the last full paragraph, you'll see it says July 4th, for one thing. It should be July 1st.
Can you repeat that again, please? The last.
July 1st instead of July 4th.
Okay.
And then two sentences down, it says, Mr. Landry.
Okay. You caught that, huh?
She told me not to say anything, though.
Very good. Is that it, Mr. Burt?
Yes.
Thank you. Do any councillors have corrections on the minutes?
Yes, Madam Mayor.
Councillor Baumgartner.
On page five, it has, I believe, I, anyone correct me if I'm wrong, but it says, for the motion to recommend a resolution to approve the Governor's Executive Orders for the Tax Affirmment Program. That it was moved by Councillor Heed. I believe I moved that item. Is that, am I wrong in that, or?
I didn't move it. It must have been Andre. I'm sorry, Councillor Baumgartner.
I'm looking back and it looks like moved by Baumgartner and seconded by, no, that's not correct. That's for a different motion. I had Baumgartner and O'bury, but I think that was for minutes. Hold on one second. Let me flip. It was Baumgartner and Melendez, I have written down. Mr. Burt, could you hear what I said?
Yes.
Why it'll be captured? So that one, that was item, let's get it correct here. That was, 5A, 202248 Governor Executive Order 7S. And the person who made the motion and the second are incorrect in the minutes. And I have it as Baumgartner, Melendez, rather than Heed, Melendez. Councillor Baumgartner, is there anything else?
Yes, and if possible, if there could be just a sentence that suggests why I had proposed changing, because changing or creating that motion to begin with, because originally we had five proposals. And then it just, the minutes didn't reflect why that sixth, for the sixth motion was proposed. So just creating some language there. But if not, then I'll concede at that point and move on.
Thank you. Any other councillors have corrections to the minutes? Seeing none, we will vote on acceptance of the minutes, 202307, April 21st. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Abstentions. So moved unanimously with nine councillors present. We are on to, excuse me, New Business, 202272 Suspense List, FYE 2020. This is on page 10. Excuse me.
Well, I'm camera, so you don't need to mask if you want.
Oh, yeah? Oh, yeah.
All right, so Councillor Parker, we're going to give it a shot with your audio.
Okay, I make a, I recommend a resolution to approve the suspense list of FYE 2020. I so moved.
Second, Bordelain.
Moved by Parker and seconded by Bordelain. Thank you very much, Councillors Parker and Bordelain. Ms. Landry is, or Director Landry is here with us this evening, I believe?
Yes, I am.
You have the floor, ma'am.
All righty, thank you very much. As you know, the Connecticut State statutes require that once a year we compile a list of those taxes that should be suspended. And these are bills, these are taxes that have been billed a number of times, particularly the back taxes, and they're deemed to be uncollectible. So what we're able to do is to cut down on the expenses of our postage and paper and toner by removing those from our books as collectible. Although it doesn't remove the tax, the tax is still collectible for 15 years. But we no longer bill for those when we move them to the suspense file. And this year's is considerably less than last year. It's $389,657.78. And that compares to the list from '19, which was $514,317.91. And if you recall from last year, we had a large subdivision that the town had taken over that was town-owned. And that's what drove that larger number from last year. And we also had some, several mobile homes that we suspended for last year. The tax office has been fully staffed now. So they've been able to be a little bit more proactive and aggressive. And they have, were able to resolve several delinquent personal property and motor vehicle accounts, which also resulted in a lower suspense this year. So if you have any questions, I do have Melissa McGuire, the tax collector, here with me.
Thank you, Landry. Do any councillors have questions? Councillor O'bury?
Yes, do we put a lien on the property when they don't pay it?
Real estate, yes. And personal property, yes. We place a UCC lien, Uniform Commercial Code.
Okay, so that makes it, they can't register a car or anything like that?
No. A lien is on the land records and the Uniform Commercial Code lien for personal property is recorded with the Secretary of State's office. The only stoppage for cars is they're not able to register their motor vehicle. And due to the governor changing from two-year registrations to three-year registrations, you may see an increase of the motor vehicle delinquencies going up.
Thank you.
Councillor Bordelain?
Thank you. I had a quick question. I was just wondering, so how long have we been collecting the taxes on these particular ones that now go into this category?
It varies from year to year. But taxes are col, years. You know, we suspend them for various reasons. Kids submit a pie chart so that you can see that majority of the suspense is returned mail. You know, we do have, they moved out of the state, out of the area. So sometimes we don't have a good mailing address for them. So in suspending them, we can turn them over to the collection agency where they can do skip tracing and find a good mailing address for these people and try to get these bills resolved, especially if they're in the military. Sometimes our military aren't aware of Connecticut and being taxed with motor vehicles. So again, we're able to get those bills resolved for our military personnel as well.
And if there is a, a tax, taxes owed that you do have a lead, a lead on, and there's not returned mail, is there a possibility to still send out a statement once a year just to keep it current?
We send out delinquents' statements twice a year. For, we do mass mailings in the fall and in the spring on all real estate, motor vehicle, personal property. Residential sewer, we just started last year attempting to send out statements twice a year. The residential sewer bills are often the forgotten bill.
I was, I was referring to the ones that now are going to go into the suspension file. If you have a current address and no return mail, I know that you're doing it twice a year. If you have a lead on them, is there a way to still send out at least one bill a year on those?
It was multiple billings. That's why that they would be suspended. If we still have a good mailing address for these people and we have a lien, we wouldn't be suspending.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Councillors Zepary?
I just wanted to know when the current tax bills will be going out.
Hopefully July 1st, before July 1st, June 30th.
And the taxes are due, due on July 1st, aren't they?
They are correct, but we cannot accept any payment prior to July 1st because it is a different fiscal year.
Thank you.
Okay, I'm not seeing any other hands from any of the councillors. So having said that, we will vote on 202272 Suspense List, FYE 2020. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Abstentions. So moved unanimously. Thank you, Director Landry. We are on to item 5B, 202306 Long Island Sound Futures Grant. This is on page 16 in your packet. And I believe we are on Councillor Franco.
I made the motion to recommend a resolution endorsing the submittal of the grant application for the LISFF for the Resiliency and Sustainability Assessment in Downtown Mystic and authorize the town manager to sign all required grant documents for such program. I so.
Moved by Franco and seconded by Zepary. And Mr. Burt, Mr. Reiner is going to address this?
Yes.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Reiner.
Good evening. John Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services. So we're looking to apply for a grant, as was mentioned, to the Long Island Sound Futures Fund for up to $70,000. So we would apply for $70,000. And there's a 50% required match. We'd be looking to utilize that with staff time, volunteer time and other resources, and not necessarily looking to be utilizing any town cash for that match. Initially, we were thinking about how could this program replicate what we were looking to do through our CIP. But last year, the City of Groton got a similar grant or a grant also from this group to do a resiliency study. We didn't want to replicate that exact same project that the city is doing within the town. We think, we thought that we wouldn't have a good chance of getting that level of funding to replicate that other project. But we are working with the city on their resiliency strategy for the City of Groton. And there might be some opportunities to expand that out a little bit. That was something that the planner and my staff were discussing a couple of months ago, prior to him leaving employment for the city. And I think as that project moves forward, there might be an opportunity for us to jump on board with that also.
Thank you, Mr. Reiner. I just have to say, I'm very pleased that you're pursuing this grant opportunity. Resilience and sustainability has been an important interest for this council and the last council as well. And I'm particularly pleased that the match can be done with in-kind services. And you even mentioned volunteer services. So that's, that's, that's good news. Do any councillors wish to speak to this? Councillor Baumgartner?
Yes, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just like to align my remarks made by the mayor. Thank Mr. Reiner for, for his work on this grant. If I'm not mistaken, and I asked this question to Mr. Burt a couple of weeks ago, originally when we were deliberating on CIPs, there was a request. Originally, there was a quest, a request to fund a resiliency study that would cover both Downtown Mystic, Paquonic Bridge and sort of the town as a whole. And I'm wondering what the, John, Mr. Reiner, what, you know, how the town ought to proceed with studying resiliency in Paquonic Bridge if, if we move forward with the grant for Mystic?
Yeah, good question. I think this is really kind of step one. And as we move forward through this process, you know, Mystic has a number of components to it, both that commercial and residential. It's a big economic driver for the town of Groton. So I think it's a good example for us to really do a deep dive in. And under that project cost, we're looking at doing a lot of public outreach and trying to establish, all right, this is how we want to focus on some of these special project areas like Mystic, like Paquonic Bridge, like some of the other vulnerable areas in the town. So I think this is really kind of step one. And we would look at, you know, the Paquonic Bridge area, Midway Oval, a lot of that area. Looking some of our, looking at some of our future mapping for climate change and sea level rise and just flooding in general can be and will be impacted. So that's definitely an area that is high on our priority list.
Fantastic. Thank you for putting together the grant proposal. And I'm hopeful the state, you know, approves, approves our grant. So thank you, Mr. Reiner.
Thank you.
I'm not seeing any other hands. Are there any councillors who wish to speak? Councillor Franco?
So this has a 50% match. And the planning department is going to cover that match. And how will that affect your own budget?
That won't affect our budget because the match can be in-kind services, so staff time, volunteer time. So if our Sustainability Task Force is volunteering their time towards this project, we can use that towards match supplies, copies. And there may be some other grants that we can also look for over the course of this time period to help fulfill that 50% match, which would be $35,000. So between the number of staff people that would be working on this and the number of volunteers, I think that we could get that $35,000 match.
So you think.
So it won't impact our, our dollars and cents budget, just time.
So you think that maybe $35,000 worth of possibly staff time and maybe some supplies would go towards this?
Correct. So we'd apply for up to $70,000 in cash to use towards, you know, a third-party consultant, experts in the field. And then we would be utilizing staff time to work towards that 50% match. At the same time, we will look for additional funds and other grants as they come out to see if we can utilize some of the, the match with that at this point in time. We don't have to have all of the match secured now as we apply for the grant.
Okay. Thank you.
And you also said the Resilience and Sustainability Task Force, their time could be counted as matching as well.
I do believe so.
Thank you. All right, I see no further hands. So we will vote on 202306 Long Island. All right, I see no further hands. So we will vote on 2023 06 Long Island Sound Futures Grant. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Abstentions?
Aye.
Aye, Counselor Parker, is that an opposed?
No.
Thank you. That passes eight in favor, one opposed, zero abstentions. We are on to item 5.
I didn't, Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I'm not, I did not oppose that.
You're abstaining? No?
I was, and I don't know why there's a delay on my end. No, I'm not. I wanted it to be 9-0-0.
Thank you very much.
9-0-0.
Thank you. So the vote on 2023 06 Long Island Sound Futures Grant is unanimous, nine in favor, zero opposed, zero abstentions. Thank you for clarifying. We are on to item.
Thank you.
Yeah, we are on to 2020 308 Economic Development Strategy Presentation, and Mr. Reiner has provided everyone with a PowerPoint that was in our packet, and I believe he's going to do some screen sharing. And we have guests with us this evening. I will let Mr. Reiner, Director of Planning and Development Services, introduce his guests, and we are happy to hear from you. Thank you, sir.
All right, great. Thank you very much. So again, tonight, we're going to give a brief overview of our Economic Development Strategic Action Plan that we've developed over the past about 18 months. Also, here with me on the call is Paige Bronk, our Economic and Community Development Manager, Sam Eisenbeiser, our Economic Development Specialist, and Jim Demises from Camoin 310. We've been working with Jim and his firm probably for the past five years on items such as our market analysis, our tax increment financing plan, as well as not only the Strategic Action Plan, but some other projects in town. So without further ado, I'm going to share my screen, so it'll just take a second to flip over and put that PowerPoint presentation on. I'll be leading the presentation, but Sam and Jim and Paige will all be jumping in, and then all four of us will be available for questions at the end. So let's see how we can get this to work.
Thank you.
And is everyone seeing that?
Yes, very good.
Presentation?
Yes.
All right. So I do want to cover very briefly, you know, or through this presentation, what led to making the strategy, that this was not just a town-driven initiative, it was something that we did with the city and the town, why this plan is different, and then really starting to dive into some of the goals and initiatives out of this plan. I should also mention that we did a number of presentations of this plan already back in February, kind of did a roadshow around the town and the city, trying to get out to businesses and others to just introduce to people that we did have this new economic development strategy. So as, you know, everyone who is involved in economic development that lives in the town in Groton here, we know that there's a lot of pieces to the economic development puzzle within Groton. And this plan was put together utilizing a lot of our past work, the intelligence that we're picking up, things for the past five and a half, six years, and the team has been assembled in the way that it is, and also looking at all of those ongoing projects and initiatives that we've been working on. There's been a lot of things happening and that have been gaining momentum. Also, we can't forget the fact that, you know, we have the big three in Groton between Electric Boat and Pfizer and the Sub Base as our big employment base. And thinking about that goal that we really discussed as a council six years ago, and that we've been continuing to talk about, how do we diversify our economy, which becomes even more relevant and important, you know, nowadays of just the transition we've seen with our economy and what's happening now with COVID. So why do we do this development, you know, strategy with the city? Well, the city's a part of Groton, and everything good that happens within the city benefits the town and vice versa. And every time that we work together, that we communicate, you know, between the, the councils, between the staff, between, you know, the administration, it's all helping in the things that we're doing to help attract our businesses, keep our businesses here, and let them know how much we support them staying and growing within the, the town and the City of Groton. And as we're putting this plan together, we didn't want it to just be another plan, another strategy or document that sits on the shelf and collects dust. We did a fair amount of outreach on this, not only as part of this effort, but we also took together all of the outreach that we've been doing as part of all of our other strategies that we've been working on over the past five and a half, almost six years now, in compiling all of that and what has changed in Groton during that time, and putting that into this document to really make this the roadmap for how we can move forward and connecting the dots of what is going to be our economic development blueprint. And this, you know, graphic here, again, shows just how complex this are, and all these different dots and balls that we, you know, all of us as a, as a team, as town government, as elected officials, as the people and the businesses in the town and the city are constantly trying to juggle to make things happen and to promote economic development. You know, I can't stress enough, the real purpose of this plan is, this is the blueprint for us moving forward, and we wanted to connect all the dots because there are so many initiatives and items that we're constantly juggling and talking about, and we want to make sure that people understand how this whole framework really works together. So when we're talking about Groton and what the vision is, and this is something that we worked with the community, with the staff, with others, you know, from both the city and the town, how can we be the choice for businesses, for residents, for visitors, and for employees? We want to attract people. And that's, as well as having that diverse economy. Groton is really a great place to not only live, to work, to play. We have a lot of, a lot of assets here, and we want people to see those, understand those, and also to understand that the staff, both of the city and the town, are here to work with them and help those businesses prosper. So how can we get our mission, how can we empower Groton to be, to really realize our economic development future and get to that full potential of what it is? I've heard from a lot of people, you know, in my time here, how amazing Groton is and how we just need a little bit of this, or we just need a little bit of push of that, or wow, I wish more people knew what was here. And that's what we're trying to, to move along with this, this strategy. And that's really been the effort, you know, that we've seen from the council, from the manager, from the staff, from our boards and commission. It's been really great watching and seeing how people are working together to try to get to that place. So as we start thinking about these goals within the strategy, what are the most important goals that came up? And this is still a question, I think people are having a hard time getting their arms around, is when we did the market analysis about five years ago, we realized that of the 26,000 jobs that we have in Groton, only about 20% of those people live here. How can we get more of those people to live here, to spend their money here, to invest in Groton and make that their place? And then part of the, the data, as we started diving into this, was we needed to diversify, modernize, and really grow our housing stock, as well as it, you know, enhancing our amenities, our recreational resources. You know, we're constantly getting the question of, well, why don't we have this retailer in town? Well, some of it has to do, or a lot of it has to do with not having enough people here, the bodies that live here. We also still are getting questions, you know, I just had some last week from members of the RTM, you know, people asking about whether it's the Sealy School or the Mystic Education Center, and why are we developing there? And well, we need a modern, updated housing type. The housing types that we've had that have been developed have been a very different type of housing. And these are, you know, this is something that Jim Demises talks about all the time. Folks, I'm sure have heard Paige talk about these items as well, about getting a new updated housing type that people want to see. And that's why when people ask the question, well, are, are the, the units at Sealy, are those going to get rented out? Yes, because it's something different than what we have here. The same at the Mystic Oral School. Those are the types of housing developments and projects that we're trying to get within Groton because they will modernize and diversify the housing stock that we have. The second goal that we're looking at is how do we shape those pockets of economic activity? So when we think about what are some of these key areas in town, whether it's center Groton, whether it's Mystic, whether it's downtown, whether it's, you know, Thames, whether it's around the Sub Base, all of these areas are areas of activity where we want to get people to connect. It's not just about the businesses, it's about the people that are here, that lived here, that invest here, and making them feel like a part of a community and having that connectivity that we've constantly talked about. A key element to all of this about getting, you know, diversifying our, our economic base, about having a diversified housing stock, is making sure that we have alternative modes of transportation and adequate transportation and parking in some of our economic nodes, whether that's, you know, in Downtown Mystic, whether that's in the City of Groton. We've heard that theme come up many times as we're talking about growth and development in the community, and even a lot of the developments that we are proposing, working with people on. We hear about, well, what about traffic? Can it accommodate the roadway? Can it accommodate this type of development? And those are things we need to invest in our transportation infrastructure. Our educational assets, I think, are something that we are not telling that story well enough, and we need to keep doing that. That's something that we recognize we all need to do. So whether it's the fact that we have, you know, Yukon Avery Point here, or the fact that between the town and the state, you know, with the new Grasso Tech, our new middle school, our two new elementary schools, the state and the town are spending over a quarter of a billion dollars on new actual infrastructure in our school system. That is an amazing opportunity that people here should be very proud of. It's showing that we're investing in our education, and we all know that communities that invest in their education are communities that thrive and continue to grow.
John, I'm happy to jump in on this one.
Yes, please, Sam.
Oh, great, thanks. Again, Sam Eisenbeiser, Economic Development Specialist. You know, I wanted to jump in on Goal Five. It's really that gets at the heart of this ongoing goal to diversify that, you know, it's really been years and years that we've been approaching this and this goal. It has two strategies really to do that. One, business retention and expansion, and then the second one is business attraction. So retention and the expansion is about supporting the local businesses that already have a presence here, and ideally identifying those ones that may want to expand in the area, hire or, or take on more space. It really relies on building relationships with the local business community and then providing those resources and support so that those businesses can grow. Business attraction, as a different tactic in this strategy, is marketing to industries that are not currently represented in our area, but might be a good fit for what we offer. Industries that would benefit from our local assets, whether it's transportation, our research and development ecosystem, or the skilled workforce. If they relocated or expanded into our community, that would diversify our industry base. These industries would likely have some overlap with our existing clusters, potentially representing the blue economy industries such as offshore wind. Thayer Mahan, which is shown in this slide here, it keeps coming up as a great example of what we'd like to see more of. The company benefits from our local and regional assets, and it represents an emerging, growing industry in advanced technology that offers high paying careers as well. The other thing about Goal Five is that it reinforces why all these goals comprise a holistic strategy. A key asset that attracts businesses is a skilled workforce. And Goals One and Four that John just talked about, they actually aim to attract, retain, and grow that skilled workforce in our community. So all the girls work together in this way. What's often overlooked, but is a crucial element of this goal, is the need for commercial buildings, especially of a diverse spectrum of sizes. If you take a look, for example, at Thayer Mahan, they're on a growth trajectory, but the airport business park is nearly at full capacity. They want to stay in Groton, they aim to expand in the Groton Heights School, and that's on track. But if they wanted to grow additionally, they could only do so as long as they could find the needed space. We also hear from other companies looking for spaces larger than 10,000 square feet. As an example, BioCT Commons, they had a life sciences firm that wants to graduate from their incubator facilities. They were seeking sizable space in the area, but they had to expand their, their search beyond Groton because they couldn't find what they wanted here locally. Thanks, John.
Thank you, Sam. And, you know, Goal Six, providing an art, an environment that nurtures those kind of startup companies. So Sam was alluding to this a little bit. We have really tried helping our small businesses. So whether it was the startup and the growth of Thayer Mahan, I think, you know, everybody is familiar with the success of SIFT, and really how they are starting to grow and have grown a lot within Groton. And we've been trying to help them to be a champion and not only grow their business, but, you know, Adam from SIFT has been great to put the word out about how we will work with community members, with the business community to help grow things of what's happening here, because it's really important that we continue to diversify our businesses, but also, I can't stress enough the importance of the communication that we have with our businesses, the business outreach that, you know, our Economic Development Commission has been doing a lot of the work on business outreach. They've made that kind of one of their main strategies to work on so that businesses know that we are here as a resource, and will continue to be here as a resource, as well as the trip funding that is helping to start up a lot of these small businesses and getting them to grow over time. And again, connecting, communicating, education on economic development, continuing this momentum of the city and the town working together. People often talk about, you know, what can I do to help with economic development? It's, sometimes it's just being positive. I know, I've said this to the council before, they call me a little corny, but just the more positive we are, the more we talk about good things happening within Groton and for the region, people are going to see that, wow, this community, this town, this city is really invested in, in themselves, and they want to help grow and support businesses here. So I think the more we do that, the more we keep doing outreach, whether it's small business forums like we had today, letting people know how we can help them and how we're trying to adapt and change as businesses are hitting a hard time so that we're not getting in the way with rules and regulations, so that they know the resources that are available to them, and that, oh, wow, look at some of these efforts where the city and the town are working together on things like Groton Heights, you know, the expansion of Electric Boat, as, as well as many of these other items. So I think that's something we all need to continue working on as time goes on. And that's really where I wanted to kind of wrap up the Economic Development Strategic Action Plan from the presentation perspective. If people are interested in getting the plan, they can download it from our Economic Development website. There's a link up here. If people have questions of staff, either of the city or the town, they can certainly reach out to our office, exploremoregroton.com or cityofgroton.com/PED to get in touch with their Economic Development staff. And with that, I will stop the screen share and go back to where we were. So again, John Reiner here, Sam, Paige, and Jim Demises from Camoin 310. If folks have any questions, I don't know if Paige or Jim wanted to add anything else.
Hey, John, this is Jim. Can you hear me okay on that end?
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, great. I'll just be very brief. There was just a couple of observations I wanted to make. Jim Demises with Camoin 310. It's been a pleasure to once again work with the town on this. I just want to mention a couple of quick things to stress some of the pieces that were already mentioned and give it some perspective. So one, one of the questions that's typically going to come out of this is going to be, what is the, you know, well, how does things change now that COVID-19 is here and like, you know, we're, we're into a response and a crisis mode? And what I would say about that is, you're right, and it's, it's important to continue with the plan. In other words, a lot of what's based in that plan is going to be true for helping deal with diversifying the economy, making the economy strong, and serving businesses. An example of that is you have had in the past, and it's also reiterated in this plan, the need for strong business retention and expansion, doing business visitation, tracking that information, hearing what's that information, hearing what businesses need. Well, we know now that having that in place has been serving you well during this COVID crisis and it will always serve you well. So you should stay the course on that, stress that, keep hearing from your local businesses. Second, when John says the, he started out with, we talked about the diversity, diversity, diversifying the economy. And we know that when we say diversify, I want to be really clear, we're not suggesting that the jobs at EB and the base and, and the defense industry are not critical or the pharmaceutical industry, they absolutely are. In fact, when you think about it, you actually have an advantage now where they're less, at this point in time, they're less elastic based on this crisis than, than many other sectors like tourism and so forth. So you're, you're faring better than other communities during this global crisis because you still have people going to work. Now, I understand there's a lot of pain on your businesses and workers in other industries and I'm not trying to diminish that, but it's great that you have solid business base. But the question becomes, like the goal stated, how can we do more to keep some of the workers here living in Grotton? And then also, how can we help support and then grow other businesses? And then finally, the final point I want to make is looking ahead, we should keep an eye out for a new data, so refresh the data as it's coming out. For instance, it's not valid to be looking at unemployment data in the last, you know, three, six months. It's all changing rapidly. It's bigger than we've seen it in forever. But we should also be looking for opportunities where there's likely to be investors and companies saying, gee, it's too high of a risk to be in a major metro like New York City or even Boston. Not that those places won't recover and do well, but some people are going to be thinking, I've got to diversify my assets and I've got to be in smaller communities where there's a bit more open space, that are a bit more livable and, and where the risk is therefore lower for future pandemics. So I'll stop there. I just wanted to sort of hit on some of the highlights and how they relate to COVID-19.
Thanks a lot, Jim. I appreciate you jumping in. And before we just kind of open things up to questions, I know Paige had a couple of quick comments he wanted to make.